But we know we're starting. And we have, first on our agenda, the ZBAA petition 339 Maple Street, special permit request for division of a four acre apartment into three lots. I sent out, excuse me, I sent out a draft letter, if people review it. Have any comments, thoughts, concerns?
When did you send it?
Saturday, I think, or no?
That's what I mean.
It was Monday?
Well, there, maybe one could look at them. Maybe you can look at one, and then the other, and you can switch them.
What did you look at? They're on email. Is that, which one? Which do you have, 339?
339.
107 Central.
So that's, so, it's a different issue. That's coming up next. So basically, it's typical, they're going under that special permit waiver to reduce the 120-foot frontage requirement down to 100. And it's kind of the same letter that we send frequently, that they need to meet the standard requirements for area, which I think they do, they have access.
Whether it's going to an arch tonight, not yet.
We don't get it. We're not getting any an arch tonight issue if the issue is...
They say it's on...
So it's still a question whether they meet the width requirement, which, they don't meet the width requirement, but that's, they're not asking for variance on that, so I don't know. In the past, they just granted the special permit and no one asks, so...
Okay. So how many are in?
They have, they have four acres to make three lots, three ones. So all they need is 40,000, so they should be right there.
The frontage will be less than 100, some of it will be more than 100.
Yes. Yeah, we never got a plan for this, so we're not sure what the actual lots look like, but they just described it. She sent us the package but not the plan. I guess the plan was too big to scan or something?
Oh.
Sorry. But generally, the line is over the 100 feet.
Right.
To a motion to...
Motion to send out?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second item is the 107 Central Street special permit for use of an existing accessory apartment. This is one that we've had similar ones also. And this one, I guess the accessory apartment has been existing for a long time, and they're just getting a premise, providing all the written for older, larger houses. And this one is a large 1840 or something house. It's a little large house, and they're, it's going to be in-law.
Family's.
Yeah, families, I think, the families living in there, and there's going to be an apartment in the back.
I did send out, I did give Melanie an email today, I asked the building inspector to go on and check, to make sure, and he did go out on March 6th, and he commented that an accessory apartment is located within the existing dwelling, and it will meet the accessory apartment specification outline without carrying his own body. So, it should be...
Just a copy to the rooms.
So I just wanted to make sure that you, a copy of this, so that you know that, because what happened was, the first one that I had on Saturday, on the ZBAA, that was one of the questions that I asked the building inspector, was did he go over and look at it? He said no. So we had to continue. So I'm anticipating now that when they, when they apply in petition for one now, is to ask the building inspector to go out and make sure they're looking it up, so that he can send it, so we don't have to be getting the way to it.
Alright, that's good.
Even though it's not in, even though it's not in the...
It doesn't say it's required, though. It's good to do, but it says on...
Motion to send the, what is it, 107?
107 Central Street accessory apartment. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Coming into the master plan.
We just put that back on the agenda. We didn't have a meeting, but it's on my planning committee, it's in two weeks.
It still hasn't happened.
It still hasn't happened, and it was supposed to be, but then it has already changed. So, yeah, we left it on because it was supposed to be, but now...
So it's going to be when?
Um, March 27th, I believe.
Do you want to leave it till next, or is it 20?
It was on this?
28, have you checked?
It's a 20, so it's after that.
Yeah. It's the 20th, it is the 27th, yeah.
Do you want it put on?
Yes. Put it on for the next one, yeah?
For the, yeah, for the 28th, yeah.
It'll refresh your memory. It'll be mine, it's on there.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll go on to the next agenda item, the A and R plan for lot 53 Century Drive, Saint Pierre accessory.
This again?
Yeah.
Oh, darn.
The only question I have, and I have, is your application says 250 feet for an industrial, even though this complies, it said 250, and I think it's 150.
Is it?
The law as it said 150, and the engineer put 150 on the plan, but application said 250.
Yeah, that form's, that form's very old.
Oh, okay.
Probably was before, it used to be 250.
Oh, alright, so that, that's fine.
So don't worry about that one.
Alright.
Show the, who's doing the luggage.
Alright, so we have, we've got six copies here, I think. And three, whatever, two, two, $400. Yep? And the owners, all the owners have signed.
Oh, turn it here.
Start off, yes.
Okay, you want to make a copy?
Oh, yeah, you want to send them out?
Yeah.
You have two towns, is that what it is?
It's, I, yes, I have to bring the mila to the city of Worcester.
Oh, they signed the same mila?
Yes.
Because it goes around.
I'll have to go tomorrow.
If not, tomorrow.
Okay. $100. May I just pass this one through?
So this, I think we look at, it needs frontage and access. It's definitely got a lot of frontage sheets. It's got, oh yeah, 200, 400, 500, 800, yeah, it's over the 150, whatever it is. So do we have, oh, she's done.
And just so you know, they came for the ZBAA last month, for two variances, and they were granted.
Yeah, we haven't gotten copies of those. Has anyone seen those?
Well, I know the decision has been made, it's been sent to the town clerk's office, and we were just waiting for the 21-day...
Yeah. So they're here tonight to put it on the meeting for our...
Yeah, we had a meeting last night.
Yes. And that was fine, I just wasn't sure if he...
Yeah. No, we're just trying to let you know that that took place, because at our meeting, we told them that now that it's been approved, that was the only way that they could come to you, is once we approve the variances.
Yeah. So, okay, now that looks good. And it's got the caveat underneath, that no determination as to, so it's only compliant. So this is one of the issues that has come up, even though we sign it, doesn't mean that you can build on it, it needs building code. So we have to go several to the building inspector for that. So, what do we got? That's good. So we have a motion to...
Oh, yes.
...pass the plan.
Yes. Same for the lot. Lot 103.
Lot 53. 73 divided into 59 and 60. Lot 53 equals 60 lots.
So if these two, alright. You seconded it?
Seconded.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good. It's easy. And the...
I know, I see a lot of time, but, yeah. We just have to work together.
As you get that piece of stuff.
I did.
I don't, I just slap my hands. If that's fine, as long as, as long as it's, as long as it's signed, it's all that matters. So this, we have three people, and there's five guys. It doesn't have to be the exact same lines, unless it's signed. No one's going to pay any attention. It's signed, it's done.
Hold the wet down. Ooh, this is my transfer.
More details, but they're so far ahead. I might have to do my...
Take this?
They are signatures.
Thanks for the support.
We, we still have a bunch of time.
Oh, wait, we're saving.
Sorry, we got more than 127 application to submit. Let's do the Century Drive application, because we're just up here. Are you doing that one? Send that, Girl Scouts site plan application?
They're not paying attention.
Girl Scouts, you ready? Yeah, well, I saw you guys in the bathroom. So, you got a package, or?
Are we supposed to have microphones?
There's a voice slightly upstairs. So we had to give down the microphones, same reason why you guys have the field camera and not those cameras.
So you can hear us and have this?
We're peeing it up. You guys have to project them.
The engineer had asked for one, she's... Exception to the size of homes, that fit all on one sheet.
There's a list, there's a couple letters somewhere, because of this, as long as that's there, and it doesn't have to be right now.
Yeah.
It just makes it sound like it's a, the agent is on charge for reviewing it when they're already got the, or...
Oh.
Just that one. Okay, so that's... And are you all okay with still playing on point scale or third scale?
Yes.
Yeah. On, on B-size?
Still full-size.
Yeah, full-size, so they wanted to make sure of the...
Yeah, it's better than having a full series, so that's good. Yep, so I think we're good, the application fee, the review fees. Alright, and so then we have this for you, we're going to have this on the...
April?
Yeah.
The 5th?
Oh, that's it.
30?
Wednesday, April 25th, 7:30, Town Hall, for you. So that's when the hearing meeting is due in 30 days for other town boards to review. That's when they can post and send out to the letters, April, yeah.
I was just letting you know that's them page, so...
So that's, so Bowler can take that and notify everybody that's needed, and then they'll come in with the green cards to confirm that everything is sent out, and...
He brings it to the hearing?
Yes, he brings it to the hearing.
Oh, make it correct.
I did whatever I did, I did as whatever came in, so if you wanted to change, I could change it now, email it to you.
Well, yeah, that's, she's, she's...
She can make it here and post it, so just...
Oh, I can just make the change.
Yeah, I'll find it out. I thought that's what we got, yeah.
Engineer, I keep... So it's Girl Scouts, Central Mass? I think that is it. Is that what you said? Girl Scouts, Central and Western Massachusetts. Just line that back. Central, Massachusetts. It's okay. Good enough. Just know that for my own.
Yeah, now that's good. So that's it, you're on the agenda for the meeting?
Moving in, moving in. Yeah, I think they are, they're good. I think we're getting it fine now. Yeah, you're good.
And I think the DHB said that they were contacted by, all of them, there was a couple of emails that went out and forth, so now it's all coordinated, and we'll just give them authorization to start now that we have this meeting.
Really have an application, right?
Right.
So you're anticipating that, I guess this, the point is, I guess we can be assured that once we get there, that we've at least given you our lead.
The VHB will let you know if there's anything...
Generally, we've received, yeah, and that's, Bowler's in the past worked with the DHBs here, and they are willing to work with it, don't pester them, like, did you get to it, did you get to it? Because you pay for every time they talk to you. So you give them a chance, you do everything, and then you let them review it, and you take their comments and respond to their comments. A lot of them will be nice and easy, simple things to correct, and others will need a little bit of work, and other things might need planning board decisions on, do we agree that it's safe or feasible to do certain things? And then it would be our decision, so that would be a public hearing on that one, so. But generally, the package is submitted.
And who will get to complete it as they can, you know, so they don't keep on going back to VHB, if they submit something and...
Yeah, don't do, like, if VHB sends a comment letter, saying you need to change the parking spaces to be nine by 10, because you showed them it's eight by nine, whatever it was. Don't just do that work, and then wait for another thing, do a little bit at a time, because it's every little bit at a time, and you look at it, and you get charged, but just get everything in together, and do a complete resubmitment, once the, if it is needed.
Okay, okay, so this conversation, alright, that's good to know.
Yeah, definitely.
Now that I'm pretty sure that it's the package.
Oh, but between now and...
Do you guys still look at it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Bowler, it's, it's open.
It's pending for us, and I think that'll work out fine. Bowler, in a couple of weeks, will contact VHB, will get a letter from VHB saying, here's the list of things that are not in full compliance that we see on the plans, and they need correcting, and then the Bowler will talk to VHB and say, yep, we'll take care of all those, but we want the lines to be green instead of yellow. Then, okay, we need to go to the planning board for that, or, yeah, that's okay, it's all sorts of things come up. But generally, let the engineers work things out, and we don't have to review things three times at our meetings, like...
Depends how complete that is when they come back, when you come in. Generally, you'll come back in for the one meeting, we'll talk about, there'll be some lingering point, and we'll continue the meeting to another meeting, so you have time to, whatever, clean things up, and then it'll probably be completed on a subsequent meeting, depending on...
And that's what we have to wait for today, is that would be within two weeks of your next.
Yeah.
Assuming that your engineer can fix whatever is done given the timeframe.
I mean, I think, I think our last one went through in the first meeting, it's rare, but now...
That's possible, but if we continue to go to our next...
Yes, yeah, yes.
As long as you can...
As long as you can, as long as, well, and as long as you get the information to VHB, and VHB can send it back to us, because we need to get stuff from VHB. Your guy can say, this is perfect, but we don't really believe him until we get another engineer to confirm it, and that's just the way engineering is.
Alright.
I know, you could shoot us a movie.
Good, thank you. Alright, do we have the 127 Hartwell Street application for site plan? Wow, okay. They did send stuff electronically.
Yeah, they did.
So...
Which one's that?
127 Hartwell, that was doing expansion on the building, the back of where the old town hall was.
Oh, that's okay, they're going out the back, okay. I couldn't figure out what they were going to do.
Yeah, so you're doing another segment.
A little more pavement, a little more...
A little more parking, a little more building, yeah.
I didn't know it was that, or the, whatever, the building off to the side, didn't you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's that one.
But, alright.
So we are fine, alright, so we just need to down some 45.
Oh, now we have to wait.
But any reports from other boards? We don't have any.
Nope, because everything was canceled.
Yeah, my meeting tonight is canceled.
I was supposed to be there, too.
I have a hunch and trust me, that's, um, a little very long. What are you doing tonight?
That meeting got canceled, you got a meeting with the CPC?
Yeah, that was canceled.
Yeah, that cancel was posted for a bit.
Yeah.
Was posted for tomorrow, but they wanted it tonight.
But the CPC posted property, right?
No.
Oh, no?
No, it was all, it was...
That's all. That's what we're doing, that's the next thing we're doing, is that, getting that money, or request for money into them, so that we can start our RFPs, and show that we have money to contribute to it. Oh, is the drawing list complete? Or no, it's not complete, the drawing of the grounds with the, the east ones and the lease area, and the other one, it's almost done, I was going to have to add on some detail. And then we have to get the detail of the land that we're going to move around, the border down at, ten yards properly.
Oh, that, yes.
Clear it together with the entrance. But yeah, it's moving along, the drawing is done, but I want to add some more details so you can see what's going on.
This is all, this is all the Orchard Mill, that one, at Orchard Mill.
Yeah, but it's got a whole piece of property.
Right, it's all on that.
What was the, it was 81, what do you call it? Z, or something like that?
I don't have it.
Because I think we're going to have to do that, do one of those, we're not dividing up the property, but I think we want to have a play on record, so we'll do, whatever you call it, 81-0 or something.
Yeah, that was something, I don't know, boy, it was one of the 81s, like, we just did the 81L and...
Yeah, yeah, another one that are...
One of those 81s, yeah.
So we'll do that, and that draws on the, to be able to be done in a timely time.
Okay.
So you need to go slowly.
It does. Alright, any other boards?
Travel.
Transportation, no, Bowler's not. Yes. He is 127, but I want to finish up boards, which I think... We all set? No other boards?
No boards.
That's good. So we're ready for a site plan submission for 127 Hartwell? Is that how that works? So you're, okay. Alright, we're going to get that one down. Alright, we have our review minutes? Why did you schedule this one for 7:45?
You did it.
Well, I thought you were going to go, I thought you had site plan reviews before you did. That's right.
I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, I was trying to plan the day, that's what I did.
I know, I know, I'm saying. Yeah, I had that right, a few days earlier, so...
Here's the family letter that says you liked it. If we had it delivered, maybe.
I did deliver it, sat at the table.
We got the, no, let's try to, I'm going to sidetrack this. So we have someone review the minutes?
Yeah.
We have public hearing, or just...
Well, we had that, we already had a good presentation, kind of thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It was plenty of PC.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Motion to approve on February 28th, public hearing minutes, Westland Circle, just to continue that meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 28th, 2018. As heard.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
March 28th, is that? We don't have one.
Even this margin, yeah. That would be next week?
Oh, confirmed.
Oh, yes.
Did you already write those minutes? You should write those minutes tonight.
That's for this minute.
Let's approve those. It's a good meeting if you're getting the minutes.
Alright, so we got that. Any invoices?
Actually, no.
No, no, there's nothing else. Just the signature.
Signature, yeah.
Alright, so we, did I say 7:40 or 7:45?
45.
Alright, so, so we hand out a request from the town administrator to, I'm not exactly sure of what, but she sent us a copy of the new screening for the, screening for the chain link fence and the laser wire on top of the chain link fence in the back area there.
Yes.
And so in preparation, I asked to get a copy of the old plan that we have, of the approved plan, and it turns out that we signed it, we signed the building inspector's copy at our meeting, but they, and they promised they were going to send us copies and get copies out to everybody, and we still haven't gotten copies of the approved signed...
Well, that's clever, so it's approved?
It's approved, but we don't have the final approved plan, so...
Forgot to look at the man, I forgot to turn it down some.
No, that's all right, we need, so, I did send an email to you, we need a, for a copy of the plan, so, because the other thing that I looked at on this layout is the empowerment yard in the back.
Yep.
They have a bunch of trees, they should be fine, but they're putting the fence up, and the question is whether there's a property off to the area here that would see this chain link fence there. If the nearest neighbor is looking here, then this fence line is fine.
Are there actually some trees over here that just runs out the plane?
I don't know, that's what I asked.
I think there are some trees behind the neighbor's houses, yeah.
Right, so it may be fine, but what I wanted to look at was this in comparison to the neighbor's property, so, I mean, I can't really see a neighbor complaining about a police station just as tough to do.
No.
Takes a little stench, but, yeah, so I don't want them to have to be put in a bad position, I would ask the question.
Okay.
Once we have the plan, we'll know what to kind of look for.
And see if there's more trees, maybe this, just falls.
Yes, and if there's, no, they may not be butter right there, she was saying, oh, the problem is...
And it goes, like, the road from the way...
Yes, so we may not need to worry about it, but before I said that the plan was okay, before we really reviewed it, I wanted to know what we're looking at. And so, hopefully we'll get a plan for the next meeting.
Okay, so we're going to turn the table, yeah?
Yes.
Was this, was this part?
If there's a little who just came in, if you could sign in, please, there's a sign in sheet there.
Let us see, I'll go on the left. Yeah, I'll turn that up.
Is that on our agenda?
I don't know, we can also have a fish out.
All right. All right, so we just have to...
Pretty much. That's your agenda?
All right, I have this.
If no one comes for 127, we just not, do not do anything. If you're on the high, said if they're not there.
We can let them know. We're expecting, 127 Harwell hasn't shown up. Do you know why, Raj? Maybe inspecting them or talk to the folks, McCarthy?
No, didn't know.
No, exactly, we had an email sent.
They sent the package, they sent a package of plans, but nobody showed up. Did they submit a check and application form?
I believe so, but I think that, because I did that on the hearing. Yeah, they sent a...
So they may just be able to go...
No, so they, they...
All right, so, so... So we're gonna have their hearing on that same day, Wednesday, the 25th, at 7 o'clock. That's for 127 Harwell Street. So they submitted electronically, and hopefully they'll show up before we adjourn or not. I'm not sure that in advance, we got the check, we got the forms, we got the...
So did you get that to them, the public?
Yeah, well, we can email it. Yeah. So we have to post it and advertise it.
So that's got the date?
Yes, first line, yeah.
Is this the original of this? I was just wondering, because the...
We only have two areas, yes. Yep.
I don't know, I was flipping around.
No, I'm gonna flip it first.
Black hole.
Wrong key.
We don't want them to get letters because we know they get lost.
Exactly. This is finished by letter, but we couldn't find the logo.
Did you forward it to...
I watched it again.
I looked at it twice already.
No, I never... Oh, yeah, I'm gonna... But that was the whole news part.
All right, so we are, that clock is a little slow. We're at 7:45.
Yep, yeah.
All right, so we have a...
Is this the same class?
No, totally different. We have 20 more questions.
20 more questions?
Yeah.
Well, why do you put me here?
That's good.
I got one for you, too. Is Scott here? Is he coming?
I don't know.
Okay. I gotta take the way to the...
All right. So what we're gonna do, we'll have a designer go through what he's proposed and what might have changed. Where we stand with responses to comments from the boards in town. And comments or questions from this board, and then I'll open it up to the public. Second, I can put that in.
When are you ready?
Okay. Again, my name is Andy Baum from Summit Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Mall and Burke Realty LLC, continuation of an eight lot subdivision off the end of Westland Circle. Again, just to reorient the board and the people, members in the audience, on this plan here, here's the intersection of Davidson and Westland Circle. And the proposed work is a construction of a 750-foot dead-end cul-de-sac that'll permit the construction of eight single-family home blocks. I'll go back. Previously, we discussed the construction of the roadway, the management of the drainage system, and the extension and looping of the water line to Lawrence Street as well as a pedestrian access grapple load that would go from the end of the cul-de-sac up to the, to Lawrence Street. There are several comments that were received from multiple boards. We submitted at the beginning of this week a revised set of plans that I believe addresses majority of those comments. Most of them were very, some housekeeping issues, but you will notice, one of the bigger ones was we did add a grass island in the center of the cul-de-sac. There was some concern about the ability to turn. This is a 20-foot diameter radius on the inside with no curving. So if you do have a larger truck that happened to get in here, it should turn, but if the driver needs a little bit of space to negotiate and then be hit in the curb with the struts. I don't know that you wanna go point by point for all the comments.
No, are there big issues or issues that you didn't address and feel the planning board needs to answer, referee at some point?
At some point, no. We did address, we added the waiver request for this transition piece where it goes from a 40-foot wide right-of-way to a 50-foot wide right-of-way. That was added to the plan set. Another thing we discussed about drainage, looking at the function of the basin for a different set of rainfall events. And that changed some of the configuration of this outfall in terms of where morphosis are and whatnot. But the end result is we're able to manage the water from a stormwater management standpoint as well as a peak flow rate standpoint.
And it didn't take up any more property over there?
No, no, there's no, the basin grading and design didn't change. It was just how we manage the outfalls. So the berm across the back is the same elevation as the previous set. The pipe sizing was unchanged. It was really just the function of this, this outfall, the ones right here. When you're trying to balance reverse and post, you know, how and what lines are going in is how you manage that.
We did... So you talked about the waiver. So you're requesting a waiver for the right-of-way width?
Yes. So the regulations require that the right-of-way width be 50 feet for this type of road. The existing right-of-way for Westland Circle here, all you can see, is 40 feet wide. The abutting property here comes to that point. So from this point to, on this plan, almost a bit by 10, we can't make, physically not possible.
So I guess my question is, the waiver is from Station Zero, right? To some point?
No, because it's Station Zero, which is at the intersection of Davidson Road, to, we'll call it Station One. Okay, the first 100 feet is, belongs to the town of this borough. That's the existing right-of-way.
Right, but the right-of-way doesn't meet that 50-foot requirement?
But it's not within our control either.
Oh, okay, all right.
You see, so...
So you're only adding, so the waiver is just what's on your...
It's really only from Station One to 1.06. So there's a very small segment here where the property doesn't belong to the applicant. And that's, that's the technical piece or waiver that we're asking for.
How small is the, how small?
Six feet, you said, or...
It's about approximately six feet by five feet. And it's almost at a 45 degree.
Just on the fine vertical.
I'll color it in right here. That's what we're talking about. I know, it's so smaller than the size of this table.
That, so, did you have a phone on?
Present, you can ask that question. I'm sure that question will come up.
I'll show it.
So that's, that's the area that we're asking for.
Right.
Another, there was some concern about the grading on how, you know, are these accessible lots on the back? So we did add a sheet, you'll find in that plan. And it really just, again, all this, that is conceptual because it's based on the individual development of lots. So we kind of showed some conceptual for a reasonable grading on if you came into a house, how can you get there and have reasonable access. We did a lot of revisions for the Water District. They have some technical components with regards to the water line.
You actually got an email today, is it?
Yes.
Is that, is that in my packet?
I thought I did.
I think you did. But basically, they said that they've work to do on this, yeah?
Yeah.
It's from my company, the Water District. "We received a revised plans in response to complaints today for the Westland Circle extension. The plan revisions in response to the comments are acceptable to the Water District. We have no objection to approval of this project."
We also discussed lighting with the Light Department. And a set of lights were added, both mid-street, midway of the road, another pair at the cul-de-sac. We expect a standard pole and, and light casing that they use, that they've used throughout the town. You'll see that detail.
And so that is one of the standards of delivery?
That's the standard. I tried to make it simple for them so that you couldn't have to do any maintenance.
That's the same thing.
Just the same thing they... Yeah, you'll see the detail on sheet.
Lexington, LA.
Hi.
Sheet 11. Okay. And it's, I believe it's the 17-foot poles what they...
Right, but as long as the light department's happy, that's...
We also discussed placement of the transformers. And some of that's gonna be when, when an electrician comes through, when science of the system form them. But he just requested that, he thought that four to, three to four transformer fans would be adequate for that type of development. And then we also discussed the location of this utility pole here. And he had some different options he was looking at to try to see how we stretch that to keep the pole rigid. But the, the ending of the conversation was he requested during construction, someone go and lay it out after the base course is down, the gravel is down. So he can know exactly where the F K is gonna be and he can place his pole.
Okay. Can you ask him to send an email or a letter?
Sure. On the sewer, sewer end, I enclosed in that revised application updated calculations to all eight lots, instead of six lots. Probably no, no change on that. I did discuss with the Highway Department if he had any comments and how he had a comment previously.
We haven't heard anything. I'm not sure, you've got these E1 detector pumps. And I think they use them in town, but I'm not that familiar.
Yeah, these sewer gentleman from Western Sampson was there as well or just happened to be there at the same time. He says there are some, they're different manufacturer, but they're still privately owned units, they're not operated by the town.
So, okay. So these are all privately owned?
Yes, all these units will be part of the privately owned.
So what part is the town responsible for, or is that...
The town is generally responsible for the discharge and there's an existing sewer manhole right at this intersection. The forest vein, all the individual pumps, the pumps are by the individual homeowner. And then the forest vein will be maintained and cleaned by the homeowners association along the drainage system.
And each pump gets its own dedicated line to the discharge?
Yes. If you're not familiar with a low-pressure sewer system, it's basically you have a trunk line or some kind of common line here. And each house has a pump that ties in, an ejector pump that ties into it. And they're set up with backflow preventers so that...
What do they do?
Nothing comes back into it. But each pump that turns on forces everything out to discharge. So it's a fairly common setup.
So there are manholes, everyone's room out?
There's a clean-out manhole at the end. And I believe there was another maintenance manhole along the line.
For inspection?
For inspection and cleaning at some point. Get a job.
So when the town, because I, I think you guys even go for town acceptance of the road?
Yes.
How does that work when the town accepts the road, but you have a sewer line right through the...
I discussed that with the Highway Superintendent. And his comment on it was, well, we have similar situations where we have private infrastructure coming in and tying into the road. We didn't see an issue to him, because I did bring that up. Should we be trying to push this out into an even or something like that?
And so I wasn't sure if he would do that.
His, his opinion was keep it in the roads. It's always easily accessible for everybody, even in winter, just like we have right now.
Can you try to get something right? And I'll try to contact him as well. Those are big issues, especially when it gets down to accepting the road.
Okay.
So it doesn't get thrown out down the road.
Is it gonna lay in next to the water line or is it water line?
No, they're on opposite sides of the road. Still terrible design practice, you keep it 10 feet horizontal separation and you keep it 18 inches below.
Actually, my answer is where's the electrical, the underground electric?
So the, right now, the underground electric is shown on the north side of the road.
Under the pavement or on the side?
It's on the shoulder, under the shoulder. So that'll be on the north side, and then you have...
So you have a typical cross-section?
That's what it's called. That's the problem, but there is a cross-section on, also on Shield Left.
Cross-section?
On the lower left.
Right, so you can see where the water is on the, going up right side, storm drain on the left, and sewer main kind of down the middle.
Yeah.
And the cable and electric telephone on there. And there's no sidewalk?
No sidewalk, we were impressed with that waiver. And that, that was predicated on being able to have this pedestrian connectivity to Lawrence here. And there are no existing blocks in Davidson or Westland Circle this neighborhood. I believe those were a majority of the comments that were brought up. VHB had a wonderful assignment, I'm sure that...
We have someone from VHB here?
Yeah.
If there are any issues, not details, but are there any issues that don't seem to be...
Yeah, I think we're still doing the review. We did notice an issue with the drainage report. The, because it wasn't printed correctly, so it's hard to review it. If you can...
Oh, okay. I got some...
Just look that over and send it to us again. But everything else seemed pretty fine.
Great. Have we got any other comments from all the boards? I know, just a couple of water, that's something that I was aware of.
I haven't received any other comments.
The, if you could check through the fire department on that turnaround?
Sure.
The other ones that will say, I mean, if they say we don't want it turned around in there, a green space, they're the safety priority. In the past, they've been okay with it, but I'd like to get something from them being okay with the whole deal.
Okay. I will call them and go back.
Any other questions from the board?
Is there any wetland? Is there any wetland at the water?
There are no westerns on the property.
On the property? Wow, I thought they were a piece of property.
Yeah.
That's how we, that's how we broke it out.
That's right, yeah.
At the, at the toe of the slope out here, there's a boring vegetated wetland. And then if you go down the toe of the slope out here, you're gonna find it, but there's nothing on the property.
All right, so we're all set here?
Is this yours?
That's mine, but you can keep it if you want.
Oh, I'm keeping it. This is a good size.
If you want smaller ones, I'll be more than happy to make it.
I want it all.
Do you have anything to do or any other town officials here?
Is there gonna be a sign? Is this gonna be a name development?
I don't believe so.
Just a street sign.
Just a street sign?
Just a street sign.
Just a street sign?
And have you considered street names? Or you're just going to go with Western?
Western Circle or Extension.
Because I was thinking Western Circle was, it circled around, but that's Davidson out there?
This is Davidson near Western Circle.
So it doesn't circle, just...
Maybe even more pragmatically, there should be Western Circle.
You said there's going to be a homeowners association?
Yes.
On a homeowners association, doesn't it have to be a name of the, you know, like, after terrace?
We have in town, Old Century Farm over on Goodell Street has a homeowners association. So it's Old Century Farm homeowners association.
Okay, so...
This would be Western Circle Extension.
Do they have a sign, do they have a sign?
It's not, it's not a sign, it's more of a maintenance, and I'm glad you brought that up. I wrote myself a note and never followed up on it. Have we seen a draft of the homeowners association documents?
No.
We have something in our bylaws as a model of town council, five years of approval. So what we do, whatever you get, give to us, we'll probably send it to town council, they will review it. And hopefully, they won't have changed their minds too many times on too many things.
Okay.
But we want to get it all, so it'll include water, the sewer, the drainage. And I think that's all that you guys are trying to share, right? Actually, wouldn't it be a water?
Wouldn't it be water, it's going to be for the sewer and the drainage off the road. So you've been doing the catch basins almost?
Yes. We still, we will maintain, when the town accepts it, we'll be accepting it, so everything in the road.
In the right way?
Yep, in the right way, so. And that would be catch basins, as long as they met the standard.
Yeah, they're the standard here.
And literature hoods, it doesn't really spec a hood, it just says a, it just says hood. So if there's a brand, or whether it's, whatever it might be, be a little more clear. And if you want to talk to DPWT has a preference, because we still use a clamshell to clean stuff.
Okay.
All right. You guys ready?
Ready? There's sewer pumps, are those going to be, are they going to be able to see those, or there's going to be a ground one? You said that each lot is going to have its own individual sewer pump?
Yeah.
Okay, will those be visible, or what? And who's responsible for keeping the maintenance of those?
So the individual homeowners is responsible for each kind of pump.
Okay.
You may notice driving around, you might see in someone's front yard, a little green hood.
Because we have one right there, I know exactly where it is. And it's exposed. So is that going to be in the back of the property, is it going to be in the front of the property?
The most likely it'll be in the front, it'll be the most...
Are you going to install it underneath for the people to build their property?
So I don't know what the exact sequence would be. I imagine when they're going to run the sewer main down for the construction of the road, and then cap each...
Cap each service?
And then when it's time to develop a lot, you'll know where the service is, and you'll know where the house is going, and where you're going to put your infrastructure for each one.
So they just need board health approval for each unit, or how does, I don't know how it works.
I believe a sewer department will...
Oh, yeah, sewer, right.
I don't think board health will do that.
Board health has already signed up and said this is all sewered, so we're out of it.
Yeah, there's no one site, sewer holes.
So it would be like, it would be a sewer connection, so you'd have to do something through the sewer.
Yeah.
As long as someone's checking the numbers, that's all.
Yes.
All right. All right, if people in the public want to speak, just state your name, so we can get it. And try to be respectful, that's all. Any comments? Anybody in the public?
I'd like to speak, yeah, they speak. I did know about the last meeting, I'd like to see the first hand thing to say, then I'd like to speak.
All right, sounds good.
I have several questions for you, and...
Kevin Quist, right?
Yeah, Kevin Quist. Been with me my whole life. One question, the first question I have is, are the maps printed in 2016 and 2017 the same, or do they change?
I'm sorry.
Well, the first map when it came, a year ago, are these maps totally different, or are they close to the same?
These here?
The elementary subdivision that we done in 2016?
Yes.
So...
What's the question?
Well, there's a lot of questions, because there's a lot of differences in them. Like one question here was, the old maps had a waterhead protection zone right here, right next to your land. It disappeared again, like other things.
Those, those are shown.
Oh, that's shown, okay. So that, okay, so don't you have to be between two and four hundred feet away from that?
Not...
According to the Weather Protection Act?
Not for the Weather Protection. Those are, I work for the DCR, which has come up before that, those are Water Protection Act jurisdictions. If there's impervious area, like a house, or asphalt, or something like that, within four hundred feet, what they have proposed is a detention basin with no impervious area. So there, have you gone before the DCR for a determination? You should put that on the list. But in general, if there's not an impervious area, it's a pollution source, then it doesn't apply, it's more for the development of the lots where there's houses, or sidewalks, or pavements.
So you mean like, this house here, and this house here?
Are those within a four hundred foot zone?
Yes.
Okay, so then those will be looked at by the DCR?
Okay.
Yep?
I'll have to check and go.
No, that's right, that's it.
The other thing is, the maps, they assume are off the scale, they have scales on them.
Yep.
Well, the problem measuring your maps on there, because I measured your map, and this road is only six hundred and fifty feet long.
The right away is seven hundred and fifty from...
No, no, the whole thing, I measured with a ruler, and it goes to six hundred. This one's three ninety from here, and I get mapped, and then this was sixty-six, this is a hundred. I wasn't changed.
I think, I'm pretty sure that the plans are at a scale. And the issue is, is that as long as they're seven hundred, less than seven hundred and fifty feet, that's the point. So if you're measuring it at less than their seven hundred, it's still okay.
Okay, because on the maps, when you measure with a ruler, it's about seven fifty.
Yeah, sometimes when they, I mean, sometimes there's a little squeeze when they get printed out and that kind of thing. But generally, I actually used the scale on this one, and it was within a couple of feet. So it was reasonable.
Well, but that's a new set of maps, though.
But this is the set, all the old ones don't matter. The current one is the only one that matters. And I, but I didn't check the old ones, you could be right on the others.
Now, another question I have is on the grading of your road, that you risk this as an eight percent, or a six percent of the new map downgrade, and a two percent upgrade, is that correct?
Yep.
Well, then how come with a protractor, I get thirty degrees here, and twelve degrees here? And if you go to the eight percent, the road will be ten foot off the ground, so this would be ten foot high.
You're not taking into account the vertical exaggeration of a profile.
Vertical exaggeration?
Make that easier.
So, just for the audience, site plans are at fairly large scales, because we're looking at large land masses. So this right here is one inch represents forty feet.
Okay.
Okay? Well, a cross-section or a profile, like you're pointing out here...
That you drew.
Yes, that I drew, is a vertical view. So if you were to take this road and turn it this way, you're looking in this direction, okay?
I'll get that up here.
Now, the problem pragmatically becomes, if you had a one inch equals forty feet, you're not going to see a one foot change very easily. It's going to be very, very difficult, you're going to see a long, flat line. It's not going to make any sense. So the industry has said we'll make a one to ten exaggeration. So if you look at the scales on that, one inch represents four feet vertically up and down.
Correct.
So if you're measuring that with a protractor, you're going to have a higher value than six percent.
Okay, well, this is full, like you said, this is three and a half, four feet per square. So according to you, this is, this angle is eight percent?
To try to make it a little easier, the horizontal scale, if one of those squares is a hundred feet, the square is only ten feet in vertical. So it's like expanding the vertical portion.
These squares this way are not the same as G-squares.
Correct.
Right. By a factor of... Ten times.
Okay.
So that's why.
That makes a big difference.
It does, you're right.
Because if you're just saying they're written scale, and...
Well, there's a scale on it, it says vertical is forty, and horizontal is, I mean, vertical is four, horizontal is forty.
Okay.
You have, you're seeing like a hundred, you can't get it, so that's understood.
The waterhead, you said it's protected on the Water Protection Act, and the floodplain has been located on these maps? Well, this is according to all these pamphlets that the town gives out.
This was outside of the floodplain, so the whole property is outside of the map floodplain.
And what about all the wildlife?
In terms of...
Well, we got wild turkeys, we got foxes, we got ferns, we got coyotes, we got deer.
All right, well...
That too, that too.
Yes, but those are not, this is where it gets frustrating, I know. But the planning board handles road design, road layout, and that function. The town, actually, I was on a couple of boards when this property was available, was in chapter land, which is protected land. It became available for the town to purchase. The selectmen at the time, not the current selectmen, the selectmen at that time decided they didn't want to purchase this property. So it remained if they wanted to purchase it. The intent that the open space committee, the conservation commission, the housing, everyone recommended, or that group, those groups recommended to the selectmen at the time, that we should proceed with investigating and acquiring this. They did not want to spend money that was being asked for this property on that at the time. So now this is what we have. So you could have protected the animals at that time, but this is not, now is, what is it?
Too late?
Horse got out of the barn, yeah.
Yes.
Unless, unless it's a protected animal under the Wetlands Protection Act, which, because you don't have any wetlands on your site, there's no jurisdiction for that.
Okay, so these, the wetland protection, this here on the site, doesn't mean that this is wetland or protected, so...
Well, if it's wetland, if that's wetlands, whatever that little bit is on the site, that's protected. They cannot fill the wetlands.
Okay, but the animals, do you know anyway, what?
I was on the conservation commission for thirteen years, that's exactly our story. You can always use more people on the CONCOMs to protect the animals. But the CONCOM is the group, conservation commission is the group that really does the wildlife, and wetland plants, and all of that stuff.
Now, my next question is, well, I went to all the abutists, and my question is, would you buy a thirty thousand dollar car without driving? Probably not. Would you buy a three hundred thousand dollar house without walking through it? Probably not. Would you approve a million dollar road without seeing the land? So all the abutists are wishing you to have a lot through on the land, and see it crossing, because even questions I've asked, people don't have the right answers. Like, oh, there's a gate there, there's no gate there. So if you don't see the land, you don't know if you approve it. So that's my opinion. But is that how it works, or doesn't work?
Yeah, well, you're actually closer to being on the conservation commission. The conservation commission actually goes out in the field, and walks the property, and makes sure the line, that they say is wetland, is truly wetland. The planning board, we do things based on the plans more. And I've been out on the site just because, whatever it was, three years ago, it was up for sale, or up for acquisition. But beyond that, I've not been out there since. But it's generally represented, you can see the contours on the plans. And there's also aerial photographs to show what the cover types are, the plants, the trees, and whether it's wooded with pine, or whatever else it might be there. It doesn't show all the details, it makes a general representation.
But as he said about the road, and looking sideways, upside down, when you're looking down at a plan, you can't see the hills and the valleys. But you're just looking down at a piece of paper with all these lines on it. And for most people, the topographical, or whatever you want to call it, you know, they don't have a clue. You're just looking down, oh, that's nice, so...
Well, in part, that is why we have our review engineer checking everything.
Yeah, did she ever get in with information that way?
Did she ever what?
After the place burned down, did she even get all that stuff?
The old stuff?
Yeah.
No, no, I don't. But we can definitely dig some holes, that's always easy.
Okay, now, also on this land, you're going to take and cut down on your map between seventy-five and a hundred trees, is that approximate? And they're going to be cut down and removed, plus you have to take all the stumps out, they can't be ground, they have to be filled. There could be between forty to eighty truck loads going in and out of there. Will they go through Western Circle, or they go through Lawrence Street? Lawrence Street has a field. So in my opinion, if you're going to set up a staging area, you'd set it up in a field, not in the woods. So which way are they going?
There's no access to Lawrence Street for a vehicle. The ability to get, they don't own any property that goes to Lawrence Street.
No, you're right, the MDC is here.
And the town is close to here, so there's no, they would have to go up in the west of the circle.
Okay. But at this point, there's no idea of staging areas or anything going through there, or...
But not out through Lawrence Street?
No, okay.
Yeah, it's my house.
Yes, very much so. And then also, when you're taking the stump removed, the hole will be filled and compacted in levels or lifts, to make sure there's no settlement, put it underneath the road.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the other question is, in your paperwork, you have a thing about you are going to take a video and pictures of the lands, which are going to go to the engineer and the owner of the land. I think the town should get a copy of the video and all the pictures of the roads, because once they go up and down the Western Circle, they're going to have to rebuild the highway there, because it's going to be junk, right now it's junk.
What was that, I remember a video?
It's more, it's on the E and S, it's more related to, well, there's a free blast area if this plastic's needed. But it's more related to erosion control, so that there's documentation during the project to make sure that the erosion controls are staying in good condition, and how to manage it in the water.
So that's during construction, or some video, or something?
Well, it says before they start, is what it said originally.
Yeah, so this is documentation of the conditions of the stuff.
So you won't take any documentation of pictures of the road? Would that up to the DPW or the town to do that, to see the condition of the road? And then after you get done, if you destroy the road, would you replace it?
I can't. That's something our DPW would probably have to address. Generally, the idea is that we have public roads, and as long as the vehicles meet the public road standards. If that, let's say, what's the road that goes down to Woodland from Western? Let's say Woodland Heights was posted for a weight limit of five thousand tons. If they drove their trucks down there, then they'd be in violation. But if it's not posted for a weight limit, then all legal vehicles are allowed to travel on it, and the town's responsible for maintaining its own roads. And so basically, yes, if he drives, if all the construction occurs, and they beat the tire out of the road, bump, they create huge bumps, it's the town's responsibility to fix it.
Okay.
Because we own the roads. And hopefully, our DPW guy is going to be paying attention to slow the traffic down, so we don't have that issue. But I'm sure that neighbors can call, or email the planning board if we see trucks flying down the road.
Well, you're already, because even when the flowers, the town flowers everywhere goes, the way they bounce in the holes, the rush with the sewer that crossed, with the trucks you talked about coming in out of there, they ain't going to stay up to the tie of yet.
Well, we can ask, it's one of those things, it's a town road, and we're responsible for it. So we need to monitor and police it ourselves, and...
And as for the sidewalks, you mentioned, you didn't want to do them, I thought that's in your bylaws, that you have to do them.
They can be waived, the idea of sidewalks, I like the idea of sidewalks, people off the roads.
Yes.
The issue here is that it's a section of sidewalk in the middle of no sidewalks at all, and there's no intent, we've got a sidewalk development plan that the, who did that one? That was...
The voice council?
The voice council. No, it was, it was in the, the same MDC gave it to the transportation committee, and they got a prioritized sidewalk plan where, if within a mile of the schools, they want to have sidewalks, around, down Route 12, they want to have sidewalks. I think it was on Goodell Street, they were talking about... I think it was on Goodell Street, they were talking about some sidewalks, but the idea is that the town isn't going to spend money to put a sidewalk up on Lawrence Street and it's, it's not the most efficient use of money. So they have this plan for sidewalks. This proposal would have a sidewalk in the middle of no sidewalks with only eight houses, so the traffic would only be the local traffic in that area, so it's a question, it's a decision the board would have to make whether sidewalks are warranted.
And all the children coming up from the hill and neighbors in town, yes. Now, you say about sidewalks going nowhere, well, I showed you before all the pictures of all those streets, those sidewalks don't know what to do. So why did you make them do it and he doesn't have to do it?
Which streets?
We got Lost Oak?
That was before my town. I don't know.
There's no sidewalks there. How about?
There are no sidewalks.
Applewood, whatever it is, lost from.
Applewood, they have sidewalks?
Yeah. The one off of Process Street? So I'm just saying, to choose.
Old Century has one, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about the new place up there with the eighty units, they have sidewalks?
Oh, yeah, well, that's, there's way more people than eight houses with eighty units.
They don't go anyplace.
Well, right, but it's, it's the volume that should happen for it.
Okay.
The volume of traffic, where this is eight houses. I mean, it's something that we can discuss, it's, it's an issue that has been, has been raised, but the point's on it, it's a low volume sidewalk.
Right.
And is it needed? It may be.
With only eight houses?
Right.
With only eight houses, there is a low volume, but if you're going to extend it to Lawrence Street to the kid, the kids can walk over there and walk over the hill, now for safety reasons, I would think you'd want to establish the best terms, because if other people had to do it, might as well do it here too. I know it'd be nice to have sidewalks all the way down the hill, but, you know, what about the place up on the highway, where Mike, Mike, what's his?
Petersen's, up there?
No, by.
I-90?
Michael's. That place has sidewalks?
Oh, that was included, yeah, that was included as part of I-190.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that was just a section within the right of way of I-190 has sidewalks.
Okay, so.
But you're right, it's a good point, and the question is there, should we have sidewalks here?
Isn't there going to be the walkway, the red line there, isn't that going to be a walking area?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's possible, but I live on Newton Street and we get loads of walkers all the time and we get students and kids flying up to the high school in the morning while other kids are walking to school. It's a danger and we're still pulling teeth to try to get sidewalks on the upper part of Newton Street and also to get the lower part of Newton Street redrawn near the, near the library. So even when you get a sidewalk, it takes maintenance and the town is responsible for maintaining the sidewalk. So part of the concerns or thoughts that I have against sidewalks in this area is that we're going to have to bring someone from the DPW with their snow blower up to do this. Who's going to do it?
So it's, it's up to the property owners.
Yeah.
It's not.
Private property.
So some models associated, town revised, the sidewalks cleaned, it's wandering near the center of the town and the school, the school and the areas.
I can tell you that.
Really? So that I possibly?
Yeah, yeah, you do accept.
I have a, I have a.
So they send one.
Right, so it doesn't get done?
Doesn't get done, I do tell you.
But those, those are the concerns, those are the issues.
What about the streetlights?
They, they develop a streetlight, well, without trees, but it's up there, I mean, it's coming down up there. Now, another part that I'm recording will live here, it's a small section of the land that he doesn't know on the building's growth, but if you look here, from this point here, it's approximately sixty-something feet to here, at this point here, that twenty-five foot setback from there continues around, so it's actually about thirty feet of land you can't use here. And I have a preventable shed on that corner, so I don't know what you're going to do about that.
Is that a twenty-five?
I've got a good shed right there.
And why can't you?
I can, the road's not cool. So if you build a road, he's going to be protecting all my sheds.
Well, hopefully he keeps his road on his property. I mean, that's.
And, yeah, but it doesn't.
It should be on his property.
How's he going to go on his property when he needs this property?
And he's saying that he can do this without your property, he doesn't.
He needs a waiver.
He needs a waiver, that's right.
Is there?
He's proposing a rest?
He's just saying, you would, you'd tell him that will try?
All right, but, and I made a proposal, that we'll take the frontage down here and trade for this to make everything go away like that, but.
Wait, what?
The frontage here, this is three hundred ninety feet of frontage in Lot 8. So the question is, you only need a hundred and twenty feet here, so if they wanted to trade off this frontage to dry land to make this go away, we would consider that, but the phone don't ring, so.
But what does she want there front, does she want a driveway on the road?
No.
She would then build a lot, she would split her lot, because how large is the lot in the back?
I want seventy-eight thousand.
Oh, you break off a piece that we do?
No, not what we would.
But you could?
We could.
They would split it, because it's forty thousand square feet, so they would get an extra lot, but, and that's between neighbors, you're welcome to make that deal or make it work however you want, but the way he's, they're proposing it, are you proposing any work off your property? So as long as he doesn't go off his property, that's.
He doesn't have fifty feet.
What does that have, what is, what fifty feet?
The waiver is on the right of way.
Oh, the right of way, right, but that's, that's a right of way with, he can build the road within the area, that's why he's asking for a waiver on that. For six feet, he doesn't have fifty foot wide.
That's right.
But he doesn't have fifty foot wide for a hundred and something feet before that.
No, this is not his land, this is the town's land. Okay, so that stopped here. When he bought this land, we were approached by him, I got a ton of paperwork to make this succeed, nine lots, eleven lots, cluster housing, we have a paperwork in there that says if she would take and sell them to his backland, she would then get one lot right here, be lot number eleven, so he'd get two more lots here, and you know what he offered her? A dollar.
Wow.
So he got two lots, he wanted to give her a land back for a dollar?
He didn't take it.
He didn't take it.
I know, well, that's, so you shouldn't have taken it, that's the whole idea.
But then he would have had this, he would have had this corner and then when this would go away, so why are you going to let him not go by code or go by, you need fifty feet to say, well, you need fifty, you better buy it because you don't have it?
And they've got it so cheap.
The waiver that we're looking at is to reduce or to allow a reduction in the width, the right of way width.
Right.
The construction still can be done with that waiver request. So as long as the right of way comes down and hits their property line, it then narrows down a little bit before it goes to the town property, I personally, and it's the vote of the board, it's not just me, they're doing the best they can, they have a fifty foot right of way that comes up and hits their property line, and then it kind of narrows down here for, I think he's at six feet, and then it's forty feet wide or so for the rest.
The old version was forty feet.
So it was forty feet wide for the rest of the right of way is there. So that's functioning with a forty foot right of way, within six feet, he's pumping it up to fifty feet, so he's doing the best he can with that, so that little triangle of six feet by whatever distance it is.
You say he's doing the best he can.
Yeah.
This is private money, correct? This whole thing?
Yeah.
You don't have any interest in this, right?
I don't?
Okay. But the truth is, if this is private money, so he's going to be able to do what he wants here.
He's asking, he's asking permission as well?
I'm proposing, now, sell him the land so he doesn't need a waiver.
Yes.
So you said you were going to do that?
Yeah, but, you have an interest in buying it?
I, I'm the engineer, I am not, yeah.
Is he here today? No, I didn't show up here. So, well, that's why I gave it all package last time, the package this time, the phone numbers, anything, and your board said, well, you should get in touch with the neighbors and the abuddies to try and make.
Well, we want no interest in the money like that, we want you guys to work that out, we don't want to tell you what to do.
Oh, no, 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 I know, for goods, the waiver.
Okay, the waiver, if you don't work it out, that's what we're going to.
Well, I hope not, but the waiver also includes twenty-five foot setback from the road that you can't build on, right?
So it's just the.
This is actually, this is twenty-five.
A front yard, you don't have a front yard, it's a yard setback, so there is no frontage, so it's not meeting, that's not a front yard, is a ten foot rear yard setback that you would have to maintain with the shed that you were going to put up?
Oh, so I need ten foot, but he needs twenty-five? If this is not frontage, what, I don't understand what.
But the setback is always from his property, not from the right of way of the road.
It's, well, no, frontage comes from the right of way of the road, so a front yard setback comes from the right of way of the road and has twenty-five feet.
That's right, that's right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's twenty-five feet, whatever.
To my property.
To wherever it is. Twenty-five feet front yard setback is required for buildings setback.
Off the road.
Off the road, but if there's a lot that runs perpendicular to that, if this is the road and there's a lot perpendicular, it's a ten foot setback to the side yard, and if the lot goes across here, there's a ten foot setback in the rear. So unless it's a right of way on a roadway, it has twenty-five feet, all the other setbacks are ten feet.
So he doesn't need twenty-five feet here?
He's not filling it.
He's not putting a belly in there, so.
Well, frontage, he said, for Lot 8.
The frontage, he needs a hundred and twenty feet for Lot 8, that's all he needs.
But, so why, he could actually go this way further then, right, in the road?
That's wetlands, isn't it?
It could have, but.
Okay.
So he'd slide the road over a little bit.
So he'll have to be ten feet from our land.
He could have followed that, if he got a easement to do construction on your property, he could have put it right up against your property line.
Okay, so, but, so I can put my fence up here too, right?
If it's your property, you can, yes. As long as it's not over six feet, nine?
I think it's way up to seven.
It went to seven feet, they also changed, well, a one foot setback with the random for example. So I guess they want to contact us and.
They have enough.
They have my number, but I'm sure I'm going to hear from Mr. Butler. So when you make a decision, what's the next step in the process? Do you have the zoning board or any other boards?
About what, about the little?
About that or about the whole thing?
I think that once he gets out of trouble, he goes to the DCR for the watershed protection stuff, and then he can start construction, right?
So he goes to the building, so he starts getting building?
He doesn't.
Do you have an appeal process for time of that?
Oh, yeah, yes. The only issue our decision is, is an appeal process of twenty days?
Twenty-one.
Twenty days.
Okay. Now, that a form you grabbed, like, we get or?
It hasn't been done, that I don't remember.
I probably got to do it.
It's all right, that's good, you guys practice.
But it's good.
It gets appealed to, I don't know, it's in our subdivision regs.
That's why we're back for the teams involved or not.
It gets appealed, he would, I think he might be, I don't know where it gets, I think it goes to, I don't know, I shouldn't, I don't know where it goes to, so I shouldn't say.
The opposite, the opposite, for the ZDA, our decision goes to the town courts office. They have twenty-one days to appeal the decision. If nothing is done in after twenty-one days, the town clerk says, sends us a letter stating saying that there'll be appeal.
But if there isn't.
If there's an appeal, then we have to, we have to hear.
You give the appeal?
We would give, we would give it an appeal if it has to do with zoning, I don't know about the planning.
No, no.
You know, this part that we're talking about, does that have to do with zoning or the planning or both?
That waiver will be granted anyway, so you're going to appeal that, our decision?
You appeal to you.
They don't want you to appeal to, but to appeal our decision.
Right, it gets appealed, but I don't know if it goes to court or if it goes to the ZDA, I don't, I'm not sure.
How do I find out about that?
It's in, it's on the town's website, in the planning board section, there's a subdivision control.
I talked to your selectman.
Uh, yes, I can buy it from the town clerk, subdivision regs.
All right, anybody have any questions? Some of them.
Sure. Name and.
Monica, April fourteenth, Polonicle Drive, do I have to stand up or may I sit?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, well, it's the teacher voice and me. Okay, I was just wondering, first of all, hydrants, where are they located in that subdivision?
There's a fire hydrant proposed, about midway, there it is right here, that's the toe of the slope, toe of the hill, and across from the drainage basin, there's another fire hydrant at the end of the whole section.
So true, okay. And also, you stated that, you stated that the, it's a privately, it's going to be a private homeowners association, so that road is owned by homeowners, but any damage?
Well, actually, just not to interrupt you, the property is, the road is probably going to be proposed to be owned by the town, they're going to want the town to take over and accept the road, that's why they're going through the subdivision process and not making it a private road, they're making it a, meaning a public standard for subdivision. But your idea, other than that, is correct, it's, they're building a roadway.
But privately, they're building it?
Yeah, but it's going to be monitored by our review engineer to make sure that it's built according to the standards that are acceptable for the town to accept it.
Okay, so, and then any town roads connected with it with regard to blasting, removal of debris and everything like that, the town taxpayers would have to handle any damage to said roads because of eight houses that are being built.
Because of the construction of this road?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, no, she's right, yes. If she, if they build something, I mean, if they blast, if they blast and create problems because of the blasting, that's not on the town. If they blast, and everything's fine because of blasting, but all the rocks have to get taken away, and they drive these big trucks down the road and the road's not stable, the road gets beat up, the town is responsible for repairing that.
Not the people who do the rock.
That's, well, but they're, they're using a town road, and the town is supposed to provide travelable roads, and it's not always the greatest deal, but that's, if the road's not in good shape to start with and driving on it with these vehicles creates more of a problem, then it's the town's responsibility to fix it. I wish I had a different answer, but.
I wish you did too.
Can I add something to? So when it goes to the blasting, so I don't know that, you know, one thousand, one thousand goodels feet, when they were started blasting up in the.
Holy Cross, Contemplation Center.
So a lot of neighbors were worried and they didn't mention that, what are the steps are there? It goes to the fire, fire chief and the fire marshals. They will, certain, I don't know how close the houses are, they will go take the pictures of the houses before and after. If there is something damaged, the basement, whatever, or some cracks under, so the door operator has to take it.
So is it our responsibility to contact them to have them?
No, they, they, no, they will come to you.
Okay.
So I don't know how.
If you're an expert?
Yes, they will come to you, they will send you notifications, and also you will know when they were, when they are blasting, yes.
But if they're going to blast, they'll have to do.
Oh, they're going to.
That's regulation, that's a very strict regulation they have, and it goes to the fire marshals.
Oh, they, your business is, there is a wall of tower.
That's, everything is covered under that, under that.
Yes.
It's a very, very rigid, strict regulations over there.
Okay, and I just wanted to note that although it wasn't the present board of selectmen in two thousand and sixteen, when this plot of land was up, they, they voted not to allow the purchase of the land to go to town meeting to be voted on. I just wanted.
Correct.
Correct. So as in the words of the late Mr. Kittredge, God rest his soul, he said, we wouldn't be Correct, correct. So as in the words of the late Mr. Kittredge, God rest his soul, he said, we wouldn't be deciding to buy land, which would be a bad precedent, according to Mr. Cornick, but we would be letting the people decide whether to buy the land, which had money available for it, and I was at, I was at that time on, on historical permission, and they were very much in favor of keeping the land intact as conservation land, as were several other boards, but that got ignored. Because of the fact that the developer of this also owned Bethlehem Church, where they wanted a senior center, didn't pass with the town members though, and so we believe that that's what it.
Not, not in Boston.
The question, just one more question, this is about the abutment, the town land there. Um, you're, you're giving them an easement. Why is there an easement there in the first place?
You mean the right-of-way?
Yeah, the right-of-way. Why is, why is?
The right-of-way is.
The town land right there, what, it just happens to be right there, yeah. Is that the only town land, land that's accessible to there?
Yes.
Okay, so it just happens to be there?
No, that's what provided the frontage. When that property was originally subdivided or divided, they left that as the access for that property.
But that was never intended to be a circle because it, it was done back in nineteen fifty-eight when my mother and father-in-law bought that, my house, they built it there. It was told that nobody could build it because it was such horrible conditions and all built in shale and everything, and now we are stuck with this mess. Who's gonna, who's gonna come to and tell me that I can drive in my driveway when you have trucks and boulders and trees? How am I gonna get in my own house? You're twenty-five feet from my house, how am I gonna get in my driveway? I'm the one most affected, and your decisions are impacting my entire life, and it's not right, and you're letting it happen, and I'm really upset about it.
Why don't you think you're gonna get in your driveway?
Because it's so open out of your family.
You haven't seen it, that's why I said you could go see the land.
Well, I drove by right there, I didn't go on the land, but I drove around right there.
Did you see my house and quarters, where the shens, I've been paying taxes every year, my whole life on?
They're gonna have to do all the load and the trucks in the street for a course, two or three days.
It's close to the road.
They can't go.
Oh, you mean during the, the construction.
Yes.
How are they gonna, they're gonna cut down the trees?
Yeah, there's no.
In the, in the beginning of the construction.
Yes. There's no safe way to do it. It's unbelievable.
Although we.
Well, so, hold on, so the question is, how is it likely to occur in that town-owned property? So let's have an answer.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not a tree contractor, but you could have, you know, a tree specialist, we know where the property lines are, okay? And they would have to come in, obviously here you just can't go and fell the tree and let it fall wherever, you'd have to kind of take it down in pieces as it goes. Because they are sizable, I mean, it's not, that's gonna be the challenge, it's like getting, gaining yourself access.
So people are gonna have to do survey their land and maybe.
Hold on, hold on, let's, let's finish in the answer.
Sir, I'm sorry, I thought you was telling, telling trees.
Am I right?
Go ahead.
Uh, so they would need to know the contractors, not the butters, would be responsible for staking out where the street lines are in the middle of work, and they have two options, either they can try to remove the trees from the frontage and work their way in, or if they felt that they could maneuver a smaller piece of equipment in behind, and they can clear themselves an area and then fall everything back until they have an open adequate area, so you kinda have two. And, again, I'm not a contractor, but that's kind of two approaches that someone could take, so that they're not damaging a butters' property and able to manage, manage opening this up to get access to the property.
And my other question was, my shed is there now, are you just gonna destroy it and throw it in my front yard and we have to get rid of it? Those are all the practical questions that are asked.
But your shed, I think, is gonna probably need to be moved, and I'm not sure how that worked. Did you talk to them?
It's from nineteen fifty-eight, so it's probably gonna fall down in two seconds, but it is my shed, my lawn was in it, my son's old place.
Yeah, but have you talked to the owner?
I tried to talk to his lawyer, and he just said, and he said, you're on your own, pretty much, with my fence.
Is that not on your property?
No, it's not on my.
But if you have so many years.
That's not your property?
No, it would if, if it were twenty years on anything but state or town-owned property, you'd get eminent domain, but you can't do that on state property or town-owned property.
But state and town can take their property?
Yes.
Oh, that seems fair.
And federal government can do it too, so you lose all of those.
Oh, no, I. I did have one more question, so if, if, if these, so the people coming in, are you gonna fell every tree so it's just like a vacant lot with sunshine pouring down, or are you gonna keep trees that, that have been there for a long time? So that it's not like, just, I mean, so there's some sort of ambiance to the neighborhood? Or is it just you're gonna fell everything and then built?
So, I don't know how to, it depends on the developers of the individual lots, so that, you, you'll look and see on one of the sheets, the road chart, I believe, it's second. It, it shows a general limit of cutting that needs to be done to support the construction of the road and the drainage infrastructure. And that's, that's what's necessary to construct the road, and unless the road is released, partially accepted, I forget the correct term, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, at, at that point, when they go to develop the lots, it becomes up to the individual lot owners to, you know, proceed with building, building lots. I mean, I would hope that people would like to keep some semblance of privacy, there's a lot, like you said, there's a lot of wooded area out to about here, and then it's an open meadow. Um, and there's some substantial vegetation there to keep it up, but that's up to the individual lot owner to get there.
Okay, and what's to prevent these eight units from becoming more than eight units?
There is a decrease direction, I believe.
Well, the, the reason they need to have frontage and area, and based on this plan, they can't create more frontage for any more lots on this property. There's probably enough frontage for another lot, maybe three something.
But there's not enough room for the lot.
Maybe two at the very beginning.
Wasn't the deed into the, into the owner, wasn't there a restriction written into that?
Not that I'm aware of, I haven't seen that.
Thought there was.
That's what I heard too.
Yeah, I heard that there was then.
And there was a limit on the number of lots?
Mm-hmm.
And you know whether that was eight or less, or?
I thought it was eight.
So I haven't, I haven't seen any of that, and if it's nine or if it's six, then we should probably know, I mean, that would, that would be it.
I'm, I'm pretty sure there was a restriction on the deed that the town worked out with.
The town?
Yeah.
The town kind of works it out with who's?
Yes. As a condition.
As a condition of the side of the road.
Yeah.
You don't get.
No, it was the old, it was under the old regime. It was, it was brought up, um, at the meeting that if, uh, it would be eight units only, and if it was to change, um, or if there was a request to change it, you would have to go before the selectmen. So that's, because they have the first right of refusal.
Really?
Yep.
Was it in the deed or just in?
It's in the deed.
It would be in.
It would be, so can you check on the deed?
I'll open it, see if it's. I'll provide it on the top of the deed.
Hi, Rich Court, fifteen Davidson Road. Do the, do the eight homeowners own all of that green area? So in other words, the top of the cul-de-sac there, does this land go all the way to where it turns white?
Yes.
The lots take up all that green area?
Yes, the, the, um, the purpose of this graphic is really just to show anything that's green is the entire subject property, and then the lots vary in size from forty thousand square feet to, I think, close to eighty thousand square, these lots up in the back are much larger.
One other question, what are those things that look like gray surprise?
Yeah.
These, so, this is just, it's, they're contour labels, and unfortunately, they, they masked it. So it's just a graphic problem.
There's not gonna be huge numbers on the ground?
We can do that if you really want, but.
I have a question.
Can I, can I call you?
Uh, Deb Madison, three ninety-five Prospect Street. What's the purpose of the footpath to Lawrence Street?
Okay, it's, it's a dual purpose, so when we submitted the preliminary initially, uh, we asked for the waiver on the sidewalks of the road, and the board requested that we provide a gravel path, because there's an existing cart path back here, if you will, uh, to provide some pedestrian connectivity to Lawrence Street. So people that live on Lawrence Street or even on Prospect Road can walk up and through and then get all the way to Davidson Park. So we, we agreed to provide that access, uh, and then the ancillary condition is, uh, there's gonna be a water line loop that's gonna help the water system, they'll tie it to the very end of Lawrence Street as well. So that gravel path serves both of the purposes.
And so in our planning and all the master planning for the town talks about interconnectivity, so we knew the people on Martin didn't wanna have a load going all the way in and connecting there, but a lot of times I know some people that are on Prospect in those areas would like to be able to walk over and go over to the shopping areas on Route twelve or wherever it might be, and it's, it's a nice, easy and safe connection for them to get there.
Did they ever decide on the playground instead of the field?
Uh, it's a good question.
Because I was checking the neighborhood, and what I've seen, there are ranch houses within Mexico, probably a little house of two and a half miles, and most of them, they have little kids, so biggest time of use over there is, it's one of the soccer games are going on, there's hundreds of kids playing there. And I know you guys talked about the, the tennis courts. Well, if you got ten people a week playing tennis and you got hundreds of kids on the weekend, I still propose that you put a playground there and not just tower over the tennis courts.
Put a playground on this property?
Well, they didn't do that if they wanted.
But they talked.
Woodland Park.
Yeah, Woodland Park. Did you talk to the parks commission or anyone involved with it?
I did, I did.
I talked to them a little, and they were questioning whether there's some, an ad guy to the, do they do the work, is it gonna be prevailing wage rates? Because the work on the park has to be prevailing wage, and I'm not sure how that all worked out, but I know the parks commission was thinking about that. And they're also trying, like you said, to do something with the, um, the field, because the field is in tough shape, it gets a lot of use, and whether it's aerating or them helping out in some way like that, or doing a donation that would be commensurate with the, the benefits afforded to their, their people, not the whole town. We wouldn't ask them to rip up the, the area and put six inches of good loam in and regrade it and seed it, but if there's some way, something that the parks commission would like, that we could help with on this, it might be a way of off, to frame the costs to the town.
Oh, that, no, that makes sense, I'm just saying with, you're talking about putting this pathway in for the kids and stuff. We've got more kids, and if you're gonna get all the kids down there, I don't know how many of these kids play tennis, I mean, I, I'd rather see a nice playground, because all the younger kids, when they show up with their parents, and there must be hundreds chairs sitting there with the parents and all the little kids, that they can go over and play with the younger kids while the other kids are playing soccer. I think that's more of a factor than the tennis courts, but that's my opinion.
That's a possibility, it's, and we left that up to the parks, and so.
Well, when I saw.
Yeah, that's not happening.
But yeah, it's, it's something that should be addressed, it needs to be addressed, that's good.
Monica April, once again, when you were mentioning, um, you just, we were talking about the road, the Davidson and. Western Circle. If, if you're having trouble with Gooddale and Newton Street, which are, well, Newton's been taken care of, but if you're having trouble with. Has it been? Okay, well, I.
They're working on it though.
I can see.
It's gonna get there.
Yeah, we'll see what happens. Um, if we're having trouble with existing town roads that are having difficulty paving, then if this impacts existing town roads, where is any re, there's no redress, is that correct?
No redress. We, no, we're, your town is responsible for providing adequate roads. If the roads are in bad shape, we need to fix the roads, that's why we get chapter ninety money, that's why the DPW gets funded to do repairs on the roads all the time. So that we're responsible for fixing our own roads, and they should be able to carry the load that is allowed by law. The reason they're going through the subdivision process now is because, one, because they wanted to put more lots in there, but, two, when the town accepts this road, if it chooses to accept it, it will be built with the correct base, the correct pavement depths, the thicknesses in the past, and I just, I don't know specifics about Western Circle, but it was probably an old, old road, it only had an inch or two of pavement, and then, and back in the older days, when I was a kid, they used to just oil these roads with sand and oil, and that's what the road was. That doesn't provide a good, solid base like what we're requiring in our design stand.
Well, after what you said is, when they put the sewers in.
Yep.
Yeah.
The company that came in and did that replaced the roads.
Yes.
So.
But only a portion of the roads too, because you can see, when you go down some of the roads, you can see basically little trenches that stay up there, and the side of the road has fallen off because that was.
And we put the whole road, it's still falling off.
So, so basically, I, there's no doubt our town roads need some work, and in some cases, they need a lot of work.
Yep.
In this situation, they're gonna be building a road that we're not gonna have to worry about, it's gonna be the same standard that was used for Old Century Farm over on Goodale Street, which has held up well, it's doing okay, it's the road going to it that is probably gonna need some work in about five years. And that's what the DPW usually has in its plan, he lets the road get built, beat up by whatever's going on, and then he goes back and fixes it. If he doesn't fix it, or try to do a partial job, and then it gets beat up again, when you know something big is coming in, you make it work. And then finish it neat and clean when all the work is done. And it's a possibility that there could be some liability because they're not operating appropriately, but we don't know that right now. If they're operating according to the law and according to all standards, we can't, as a town, we can't do any of this.
Does Old Century Farm have a sidewalk?
It does.
Yes.
Where's that go?
It, lots of wood around there, it's, it's one of those things.
There's another sidewalk that goes over here.
Questions in front?
Yeah, Jack Flynn with, uh, doesn't deserve. Um, is there gonna be any fill brought in for this, and where does it come from?
Yeah.
So, yes, the, the fire's gonna need fills, particularly spec material, uh, it's gonna be, like we talked about subdivision standards, so there's gonna be gravels and, and, uh, ordinary fill is required in this spec. Where it's gonna be coming from, that's gonna end up having to be sourced by the contractor when they decide to go and build the road.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, everybody seems to be having problems with fill. Huxbridge, um, they're all worried about where it's coming from and how it's affecting the town, and, um, what's allowed, what's not allowed, what should be allowed, and I'm curious about what they're gonna put up there.
Our standard in the subdivision regs is that it's clean fill. I think what you're referring to is some of the hazmat projects, it's contaminated or.
They're coming out as.
Previously minor contaminated, and it's, well, it's not, I don't know if it meets the standard that is in.
Well, I know it doesn't meet the standard, but they're, they're calling it clean fill, it's coming out of water.
Right, but our standard is, the standard that we're gonna be monitoring with our town engineer to make sure of that. That's, that's why we have them pay thousands of dollars literally, literally, to have our engineer on site watching, making sure that the material is not bad material. If it is, they send a report to us or send it to them, and we have had some people who have brought in material that wasn't up to spec, and they had to dig it all up and replace it with the right stuff. So you can't guarantee that it's not gonna happen, but we have someone being paid on our behalf monitoring the construction.
Can I, uh, get on that job? Can I be monitoring this whole thing from one end to the other? If you're gonna pay a guy, I live right here, I just go on my coffee, my chair.
My seat will be free, so we have about a week or two, if you wanna run.
You don't know me.
I need the neighbors, this, I'm serious.
When I lived in Center with Foilson, they knew me as the mayor, I'm gonna run for mayor.
That would be nice to be asked. All right, hold, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, question in the back.
Christine Court, fifteen Davidson Road. Um, the gravel path that goes, the walking path that goes up to the back, does that, like where it goes up the page, so does it connect up to the path around the water tower now? Is that where it ends up?
Not, up in the top.
Up in the top, yeah.
The water tower's here.
Okay.
This is gonna connect lower at the road, it, um, it's off the end of.
The dirt ice road, right?
Yeah, it's not up to the water tower.
And, um, and is there, if there's an emergency, is there like fire access from Lawrence Street, or would, would everything come up through Western Circle?
Here, the gravel path is, is really wide enough for a pickup truck to come through, it's really for the water department to do their maintenance, pickup truck or backhoe. It's really for the water department to do their maintenance. Pickup truck or a bathtub. It's not intended to be a.
Thank you.
Way in the back.
Susan Stone, Seven Central Drive. Just wanna clarify, did you say that there will be different developers for each home? Is that correct? Or one developer building all the homes?
Okay, so the.
I may have misunderstood.
No, nothing is ever actually, with a subdivision, nothing is actually stolen. So there's a lot of different ways that someone could develop a road. Okay, so a person, a developer can go through and say, look, I'm really good at building roads. I'll build the road and sell lots to individuals whoever wants to live there. And then it's up to them to figure out what size house they want and construct it. You know, other subdivisions, guys are builders and they hire someone to go and build the road and then they'll go through and build houses around as they go. It's really up to the developer on, on how they, you know, what best works for them. Or it could be a mix. Maybe they wanna build four houses and sell the other four houses.
So as part of the submitted plan, is there a sales range for these properties? Or could they be anything?
We don't have any pro forma or cost estimates done on this. Do you have an idea of what the houses would range?
Well, I mean, you've got larger lots in West Boylston. There's not a lot developed along there, so I would assume. And this is a hundred percent assumption that they'd be building larger homes, higher end homes.
So if we equate this to like Newer Circle, which is down on Prescott Street? How much were they?
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand dollars on a seven lot subdivision, similar layout to this. But it wasn't in this neighborhood. It was down on Prescott Street. Go past the old mixed building and you're down there on the left before you get to the railroad tracks. So those were five hundred thousand?
Four hundred.
Four or five, okay.
Do you want a circle for sidewalks?
Oh, yes.
Mads?
You would say that the footpath would be wide enough for a pickup truck? Is there any prevention at the entrance of that to stop a random pickup truck from driving up through there? Not town?
Right here?
No.
At the end of Lawrence Street?
Yeah. Well, would it be gated so like only the water department would have access?
Is it gated in Lawrence Street? Could someone be driving up to? There should be a gate at the top. I thought there would be one.
There's a gate at the top of the water tower. It can drive all the way.
I've driven it.
No, I'm thinking on this.
Yes, there should be a gate on this.
Or supposed to be a boulder or some device.
Yeah, some barriers, some size.
You can walk through it, you know.
Right, exactly. Or your horse.
Yes.
Monica, you go down. So you're, are you building a road? And, or are you building a road and having some people build those houses as well?
Do you know the strategy?
I don't know the strategy.
So you're building a road and clearing land?
The purpose of this application is to build, construct a road. So this gray piece is what we're proposing. And it creates frontage in area for the ability to put eight single family lots around it. I don't know if that clarifies it for you or not, but I tried to describe it. There's a couple of options once they construct the road in terms. Because the road needs to be built in order to generate frontage to build a house. The only requirement is frontage in area in order to have a building lot. Okay, you can't have frontage without legally created roads. And that's what, that's what the purpose of this application is, creating frontage around this right away, which you've heard us talk about ad nauseam before. And that allows access. So once the road is, I would say completed, it wouldn't be a hundred percent, the town would then release the lots and permit the construction of the individual houses.
But those lots are clearly defined?
Yes, yeah. Part of the package, you'll look on a sheet, I believe it's five. It's called the lawning plan. That ends up being a legal description for each, each lot.
Okay, so stage one is the road.
Correct.
Okay, so once the road is built, the only trees that are gonna be taken out, from what I can understand, is whatever needs to be taken out to build the road.
The road and the drainage.
Okay, the road and the drainage, okay. Has each lot already been marked out?
In the deal?
Okay, so that will not, that would be like phase two. In other words, once the road is completed, the only trees that are gonna be taken out is what needs to be taken out to complete the road. Okay, after that, then those eight lots will be marked out. Right, okay. Then, from what I can understand is, and I know the concerns because I've seen this happen too many times. Now, a person buys a piece of property, tears down all the trees, makes the lot appear. And then all of a sudden, they decide not to do anything. The lot just stays there and it looks horrible. We have the same situation going on on.
On Route 12.
Not only just on two, but we got another property, the one that's right across the street from the light plant. They bought the property and now all the trees are gone. And now we have no idea what's gonna happen. Because supposedly the person that bought it.
All right, you don't need, don't go into that.
But I'm getting to the point, okay? Getting to the point. So now, phase two would be each individual lot, okay? Depending on whether it's one developer building one lot, one house, or eight different ones, okay? I'm hoping that what happens is, is that each lot will be used as an individual. In other words, they'll take lot one, this is lot one, right here, lot nine. Okay, so they would look at that lot and they would develop, they would look at what is, what is on that lot as far as shrubbery, trees, whatever. Because I know people have said, there's a lot of trees up there that have been there for hundreds and hundreds of years, okay? So they would look at where they're gonna place the, where they're gonna place the house, okay? And then hopefully, look at the surrounding area on that property. And each property would be an individual piece and take only what is needed. So hopefully, some of the trees that exist there that have been there for numerous years. Hundreds of years, as long as they have not been affected by the A and B. Okay, do we even know if any of this, if any of this property has been there? That things are all been cleaned.
Well, actually, to summarize, I think what you're saying is, we would hope that they save as much of the existing farm.
And each, each lot would be a separate.
Well, we hope that they can do it under our regulations and because we're in the United States. If someone buys a lot and they wanna clear it, they have the right to clear their whole lot. So you can't do it. We can like it any way we want. But what we're reviewing and approving eventually, or reviewing at least now, is for the construction of the roadway. It could get built in nice and neat. I've seen developers that come in and just barely get enough room for a house and get in there and save everything. And then others that just wipe everything within fifty or seventy feet of the road and they're not sure where they want to house.
Exactly what you're saying. What I'm hoping is, is that even though that the first phase of this project is the, is the road, I'm hoping that they just don't go in and clean the whole property. You know, they just do clean just enough to build the road first.
I think we all hope that. We all hope.
Yeah, we hope, but we don't know.
Most of the trees in there are, they're half dead.
We're counting the trees.
All right, what do we got over there?
On the, on the erosion control lane, once they put the silk fences in, you'll be able to see kind of where they're gonna work and what trees they're gonna, in this sort of phase one road building project, that you'll sort of see what they're gonna do once they put their erosion control in. You know, you won't see the lots, but you'll see all these, or it'll be like a, actually, I don't even know what you're gonna put down.
There's a few different ones.
Yeah, I mean, I want some of those with the fence, rainwater. Each one of those lots has at least a hundred twenty feet of frontage.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Could, could, is there, is there room to build more lots?
No.
And maintain? They maxed out zone the best they could. No, I'm asking a question.
It's not on your property. Is that one for, we don't have control.
Right.
But if, for the maximum number of lots on that proposal, it could be one more added on that's not on their property.
Because I think what was said in the act is, is correct. When they went before the selectmen, before this selectman was on it, that was the contingent, is that there was gonna only be eight buildable lots.
But if it was just an act that the selectmen said, we want this, but it never really got reported to be, it's helping for it. Okay, all right, so then that's good.
Yes, could you just tell me again? I know that that first lot that you have, you have next to my house, you're not sure where that house would be. I know that's just put up there. How close to my land and that land is it? Is that ten feet or is that?
This right here?
Yeah.
It only allows them to be ten feet. What they show in the picture doesn't mean. Like, they have to be ten feet away from the house.
Because it's hard because it goes to my whole backyard too. It goes to the side, the back and the whole front.
Somebody's been talking about some screening, like a fence or whatever.
I tried to talk to his lawyer and he wasn't available to anything. He just said, you don't have to do anything.
That's right.
You don't have to do anything. So all of my fence, eight thousand dollars worth of fence, would be just removed. That's not fair to a homeowner.
We want to see something, so on that lot development, there'll be a condition. If it's not in the design plan, we can make the condition of the approval.
When they built my lot way, from what I understand, the prices, the houses had to be so many square feet and a certain size and so forth. Now, I know initially with the first house on the left, because it wasn't. But the rest of the houses had to be big. So why did they make Elliot Freeman do that there and not say to this gentleman, well, we want at least three thousand square foot houses?
If I remember right, I thought it was Elliot Freeman's decision to do that.
Okay, see, I don't know.
He wanted big houses, big lots, and that, that was the key. That's what he wanted. At least that's what I thought. But I was only, I was on a concom back then. I wasn't on the planning board and we just looked at the wetlands. But it was, I think, one of his conditions. It wasn't a town.
I believe that. He brought a lot of data about that. Now, you said about the erosion control. Your erosion control is only based upon the road, correct?
Correct, and the drainage.
Drainage.
Well, it's based on where they're gonna work.
So according to the price of lot eight or any lot, if they're gonna build right there and that's a hill that comes down like this to our land, they're responsible, the person who bought the lot is responsible for sediment erosion.
On their project.
If they, if they sell it off. If they keep it and develop it, then they're responsible. But whoever owns the property is responsible for it. This property is also greater than an acre. So whenever it is greater than an acre, they're subject to a stormwater pollution prevention plan preparation that they have to do and they have to get approval from the EPA. Antidive, yes, right, so.
So they have it already?
No, no, this is the, we're at that first step of that. But that's not all that hard to get. It sounds real good, but it's not too tough. Any other thoughts, questions? No other? All right, Dr. T?
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Robert Tashin. I know many of you. And my home is three sixty-three Prospect Street, West Boylston. And I'd like you to understand what's going on. You all have concerns. You're very interested in the town. I am. I dedicated and gave much of my life and career being in town government in the past too. I also know every inch of that four oh five Prospect Street, from the top of the hill down because I owned it. And unfortunately, things are being said and presented to you that are not correct and accurate. Now, I'm gonna go back along. That's the first thing that'll be used against me. Don't turn off the subject state. This is extremely complicated and it requires that, so I'm still, I'm gonna do it. But I'm going to try to summarize what the existing situation is here. Tragically, this town government is not presenting to you accurate information that will impact negatively on this town for years to come and for citizens not even born. Now, as far as my concerns, I feel this way strongly about it. And I've done everything possible to do this in a light way. Now, I've been in touch with the town government. I've been in touch with Anita. I gave her all the materials and it's covered up. Now, what I did, in total frustration, last August or so, I filed in federal district court a lawsuit. And that lawsuit is RICO, racketeering and public corruption. You may act like, no, my friend, I know I saw you in court and you didn't win. Now, as far as, when I filed that, I found it as plaintiff, civil lawsuit, and it had a whole list, about ten defenders in that RICO case. The, to understand a RICO case, you have to understand that RICO is really like an Al Capone case. And this isn't sounding dramatic. It is like an Al Capone case. And don't be smugging at me. Al, and so there is a primary defendant in this thing that's caused a lot of this to evolve and it's caused this kind of government to go. That primary person is the chief of police who owns the rest of Prospect Street. Now, I look at him and he's knocking his head down and so forth. He was in court.
This is Jim. I don't like the dessert.
Well, you don't need the expressions.
Doctor, let's try to focus on this, on this, on this property.
All right, all right. Let me say this.
On this property.
In the RICO case, I'm up against teams and lawyers, which I understand. They all say the same. They want dismissals. They.
Is it, I don't know about the RICO case. I don't know. So I guess what I'm trying to do is.
You have a lot of people talking. You don't need to talk five minutes.
Is the RICO case associated with this property?
Yes.
It is. So this is in there in the document.
Yes, what I did, I, I took this, Vinnie. I gave this to Anita and it's dated, the last date here. It has a lot of the information. Now, what I did, and of course, you're gonna get dismissals and problems. I filed that RICO case in which initially, Minnick, who owns all of four oh five, you, Vinnie, should know the details of the DCR and what we went through and all the restrictions on that land, the whole, the water problem and all the other details. And the fact that the stagecoach Rosen went through there, which no one seems to know what the end of the road is. Now, I filed that RICO case and I came up against, which is expected. I filed it without lawyers as a plaintiff and I'm not out of my mind because I know this, dealing with many lawyers, lawyers are basically, they lie and get the facts, okay?
Yeah, I'm not understanding.
Okay, okay. Now, what I did, after I heard that last hearing I had here, which I wasn't aware of, I got upset. And I watched carefully and I said, I come here. I spoke to, to Anita about it.
Tell me that's right.
I filed, hold on, to the RICO case, another case. I filed against Walden Brook Realty. So it's in federal district court. I also filed against the West Boylston Planning Board. You're, you know that, I bet. I bet she told you. She had to tell you.
What she told me was that you wanted to speak at our. What she told me was that you wanted to speak at our meeting, I asked if it was relative to this site. She said it wasn't, and that she would talk to you, that you would have to deal with it some other way.
I, I don't care what I say, but I'm going to say the truth. Anita has been tracking this, Anita's name is on this, and Anita tends to cover it over. I went to Anita, and I said this. Look, I would like to speak and try to make it concise. I had in my mind how I would speak and try to pull this thing together in about a half hour, but obviously, there's no time. But I said, "I'd like to present this to the planning board, and I'd like to have it on television." Because I said, "I'm going to use this television, and I'll put it in the federal lawsuit." And Anita said, "Okay, no problem, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Vinny, I'll put this to Vinny, no problem." Then I also said...
I get to process what are the facts that have impact on this development?
The whole thing going on, do you want me to go over it?
I want just the facts, a summary, not a dissertation.
Don't interrupt me, you know, you let others go ahead and talk.
What issues do you have?
The whole 405, why don't you read what I've written in it, it's in the federal court case? Why didn't you read the material? I was going to give it. It don't sound as if you saw...
No, no, I haven't been given it.
They haven't?
I haven't been given it.
Here's one of them. And I can give you more of them, that's just one of the, you won't be able to read it in time. And I also said, I also said this to Anita. I said, "Let's be open with the town people. Let's not let them be victims, let them know and understand what kind of things are going on." I said, "I would like to meet with the planning board, and I'd like to meet with the selectmen." She's, I said, "I, I want to be honest in the above board, so the town knows what they're in." I said, "I'll meet before the selectmen, if they televise it, and also, if I meet, I'll meet." I am not going to meet with the selectmen in a executive session. I refuse to. So then, so why didn't you read this?
Focus on this. Hold on, hold on.
Alright, you want me to read it?
Hold on, hold on, just hold on.
Dr. Teague? This, ours is the planning board, and I do understand, I, no, second. I do understand you now, you do want to speak with the select board. But, you know, if I have to say something on the select board, you are, you filed a case in the court. When it is in the court, what the select board can do, you are dealing with the same issue, you are taking it to the court. When you are in the court, the judge has to make a decision, right?
I'm trying to work with the town.
But you are, you did file the case, not one. You did file one case, and now you have filed, now you have, no, no, no. Now you have filed another case. Those cases are pending before the judge. So what, what, you know, what we can do? The, the judge has to make a decision, right?
The town people should know what's going on.
Well, that's, so tell us, tell us what's going on.
Alright. Can I, can I?
You can tell us what's going on, how replies this, not what's going on in someplace a half a mile away. We have to deal, the public hearing for this is this property, which is, or was part of 405.
Water is a problem. Water flow is a problem. I worked on your DCR, I worked on with this with Jim French. And we set up the DCR CR.
A constant.
For all Prospect Street. And when we set up the DCR CR, the bottom of that hill that now Minnick has got by very questionable means, is where that water flows down.
Yes.
So, the DCR CR states clearly that no animals go on any of that land. Nobody walks on that land, it's to be protected land. Now...
And that's the area budding this property?
It flows right off under the DCR CR, you ought to know that.
Well, that's, I, I know what it is, but people here don't, so it's the area, it's the south east, west.
It's going right off that hill right down.
It's on the left side.
What's wrong with it?
It's contaminated water. When you get up to the top of the hill, you have the hill. That hill has wetlands on the lower side. That hill, we talked about water. That old farmer, and I've written, it's in the court documents, Old Johnson, years ago, he had only a twenty-foot well up there in the top of the hill, they're digging up like that. A twenty-foot well with a pipe down, took care of his cows, horses and himself, he drank that water. So that surface water, that's up there, they're going to dig that up. Now, that's wedge. On top of that is the water tower. You've got to be very careful of that water tower, because the water that we've got from the Lee Street wells, pumped by, from the Lee Street wells, goes down from Lee Street, Prospect Street, up Warren Street, stored and by gravity flow goes down into town. That is, you shouldn't be using dynamite or anything around here, or making paths or anything. That should be carefully protected. Now, just take a look at the people mentioned behind me, historic. The historic road, Jim French does this, your DCR, which is get out the DCR stuff and review it. Now, when I-190, you know I've been in this rubber stuff a long number of times. When D, when I...
I-190 is not near, I-190 is not near this site. Stick to this site, stick to this site, please, or we'll just move on.
I-190 took...
Stick to this site.
I'm going to the site, be a patient, you don't try to everyone else off. I-190 took off the stagecoach road. The stagecoach road ended up right, uh...
At 405.
Right, almost opposite the entry to Prospect, to the 405 Prospect. Right there, the only piece of land, about eight acres, I still, wetlands. That wetlands gets water that comes from the top of the hill too, but before you, you enter that. I worked with Jim French this year. And with Jim French, we tried to get funds to put that wetland into DCR CR, because Scott Goddard was trying to buy that too. So, he thrives on this kind of land. So that, that, that piece of property there, that guy, goes out at the end of the stagecoach. The stagecoach road goes right up through the Prospect Street. I mean, right through 405. The barn with Warren's Tavern, the, the buildings next to it were carriage houses. It was a historic tavern. The stagecoach road goes straight up. Now, on two sides, this right, there's a stone walls, flat stones. And on those flat stones, we put the DCR CR restrictions. Nobody is going to touch that stone wall, as it goes up the hill. Now...
We're not there yet, we're getting there.
Just pay attention, we're getting there.
I don't pay attention.
No, well, that's the trouble, you guys don't listen, and you don't understand. So then, so then, that gets off of the DCR CR, the bottom of that hill. Got it, Vinny?
I know it very well, yes. We got...
Now, you go up the hill, it curves, it's all rocky. Now, on this, he's going to blast that. Now, now, on the side of that, this, oh, it was cleared away from the stagecoach road, because the horses couldn't go straight up the hill, they had to go sideways. They couldn't rest them. They went up the hill, you know, we're on 405, they're down.
I know, I was just curious, what year are we talking about? How long ago was that?
When, when we stagecoats running. I said it's a historic road, and you understand?
A hundred, before you began.
You're hearing around now. So, the stagecoach road goes up the hill, curves. The top of it, right is where you're going, takes a corner, goes out. That's the end of the historic road. Because from then on, all this development occurred.
On Lawrence Street, is that correct?
Now, Lawrence Street, let's take a look at Lawrence Street.
Alright, well, let's, I'll focus on this, we still haven't, we're going up the hill, we, I thought we were almost there, but...
We're up the hill.
So we're there, now, what is the issue with this property, please?
Because...
What don't the boards in town know?
First of all, if you mess, they called it Malden Brook Realty, right?
Well, the property owner's name, yep.
Yeah. What about Gatesbrook?
What about West Boylston Brook, what about, there's a lot of Brooks, but...
There's only two Brooks that are worth anything, with Malden Brook, Gatesbrook, you guys obliterated. Gatesbrook. Now, now, okay, listen, Bernie, I mean, Vinny. I was thinking of something.
That's run aloud for a few years.
Hey, Vinny, listen. Gatesbrook was eliminated on Route 12. Now, Malden Brook is all we got for the water. So, when this...
At the Tam O'Wells, at least.
Now, this water flows off the top of the hill. That sedimentation pawns, is a joke.
Well, but this property, this property drains, this property drains to Gatesbrook and goes the other way, it doesn't go...
It doesn't go to Gatesbrook, it's not Gatesbrook.
It goes to Gatesbrook, that's why.
Okay, that's what you said, it goes to Gatesbrook. Gatesbrook is a fragment.
Yeah, well, you have the, you have the, you have your wagon grill.
Yeah, see, he's sorry, it's there. I don't know where we got it from.
He's the man.
Now, listen. Water comes off the hill, right?
Okay, so water's coming off the hill.
Supposed to.
Let's go on this site, they are required to meet all the standards. The water is approved, they wrote the letters that they have heard.
Mine does it. Now, just let me finish this, see?
Give it to a point, please.
That's why I can never make one complete sentence, because I'm always interrupted. You let other people speak, let me finish my sentence.
Go ahead.
The water runs off of here, Gatesbrook is a darn. But Gatesbrook, the way the water came off of the top of the hill, it, it went down Gatesbrook to some extent, but Route 12 progress destroyed it, no Gatesbrook. Now, it goes down the hill. It goes down the hill to the face of the hill. This water. Now, my home at 363 Prospect, you say, "Don't say," I got to tell you if you want to hear.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I think I've heard, I've heard enough.
No, you haven't.
What I think we're going to do is, we have other issues that this plan has to, hold on, please.
What kind of government is this?
There's other issues that this plan has to get addressed.
Let me finish this one.
No, you're done, no.
You don't want to hear, I'm going to tell you.
What I want you to do is, put together a summary, a summary, not a season eight page document. Put together a summary, we're going to be continuing this public hearing, so put together a sign, and then you can present that at the next, the continued hearing.
You're going to listen to me finish this sentence.
Other, other comments?
And we are in agreement.
What's with you, Kevin? Okay, Kenny, I'm sorry.
This is not going, I'm glad...
That's enough, that's enough.
Yeah, because you don't want to hear.
I will, I will entertain your, your summary and your presentation. I will, let's just stick to the focus of this subdivision property, that's all I'm going to hear.
This subdivision property will impact the rest of it.
Okay, Mr. Chris.
Uh, question, Mr. Tadg, here, Dr. Tadg said, "All these boards, the town with oil, the town administrator, all on a federal lawsuit right now?"
Damn right.
"You're in litigation?"
Yes.
So, if this is the truth...
They're in litigation.
How can you make any decisions on anything here before litigation is done?
They're in federal district court, and they're going to stay there.
Well, we haven't decided, we're getting feedback, any information? I've just found out, the planning board is now in litigation.
How'd you just find out, what are you doing?
Well, that I don't know, but we found out now, I will find out from town council what our options are. But we're going to continue this, uh, there's not any big issues. Our next meeting is in two weeks.
I can't come back in two weeks, I've got other stuff to get ready. But I'm going to tell you this.
March 28th, do we have anything else on that?
I have a big presentation in federal court by the end of the month, and I cannot delay. But I'm telling you this in federal court.
So what we can do is, we can continue this hearing, you can summarize, summarize your information and submit it to us.
I can't check to that number.
Well, then we'll read it into the minutes. Summary, we'll read that into the minutes. We'll give it to Mr. Chris.
No!
Who did you trust? I'll take it, I just told you I'd take it, you didn't believe that I would read it truly. Okay, well...
Alright, read the law.
What's the stagecoach road?
Yeah.
So, what we'd like to do is, can we continue, do we have any other questions?
So, continue on the twenty eighth, because you know I can't be here.
I just wanted to ask you a question. Jan Matthews, I was, um, I almost dropped the ear. I just was wondering, where is the field in, in relation to this map?
It's, it's here, yeah.
The, the stone wall at the bottom, like...
There's the stone wall going down.
No, there's one that goes right here.
No, that's another stone.
There's a field that are right here.
Yes, yeah.
And where's the stone wall being out?
Does the stone wall come down, no?
No, it's one, the one that, mine is just like this.
We have a question, let's give it to one person. Did you address her?
Yes, her, her question was where the field was.
It's not for everything else.
Okay, so you know where things are, okay. Did you have a question?
In deference to the doctor, is this information we could Google online to get information on?
What?
The information he's talking about?
I'm not sure what information there is, I, I want to get the information, I'm just trying to get the facts, not...
I tell you what I'm doing. I put all of the court documents, everything else are going to go on the website.
Okay.
And anybody that wants to speak to me, you're more than welcome. And I just want to, they won't let me speak, I knew they were going to pull this stuff.
Okay, do we have any other questions for tonight?
Don't try to get around this.
I get motion.
Yes, I do.
Oh, sorry.
You got a motion.
Um, when are you going to make your decision about this?
When we have all the information before us.
Well, you're going to continue it.
We will continue it until we're, we're satisfied that we have everything that we need to make a decision.
I can't come to twenty, don't pull that on me. We're going to the...
Can we go to the... The public conference is the next one after that? No.
What do you call fourteen?
Eleven thirty?
Exactly.
Eleven thirty. Eleven thirty, oh, yeah, that's not very much.
Yeah, it's about that.
Do we want to go till then, is that, with your timeframe on, I can do that.
Is it okay? I'll be here. You're going to let me speak?
Summarize. Prepare it and summarize it.
We always have these court documents.
I don't have time to read, summarize it.
You better have time, because this is the future.
I'm going to refer to the town council and let them... I'm gonna refer to the town council and let them tell me what I...
That's a waste of time. Yeah, that's a, that's a, you know, I'm done with that. I was...
I make a motion to continue this here until April 11 at 7:15.
April 11.
Can I get 7:20? 7:00?
No. 7:30?
Another day.
7:20.
I said, please, no, I'm a birthday.
Well, it should be quick. It should be quick, yes, because we, people have months to prepare what they need to say.
I was gonna watch when you tell me it was the timeline.
So, I'm not there yet.
Yeah.
I second it.
7:15, I'm second. Don't you.
We need, we need, and if you're not gonna... Well, we didn't have Paul here tonight, so we need all the other members. And if this, heaven forbid, it goes until the election, you won't be around, so we need Paul. The way this is going, I don't wanna lose some members.
Oh, 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 oh. Oh, that's sweet. That'll be nice.
So, we'll call your managers, and we'll get you, you know, on the ground, just to see.
Before you finish? Is there anything I was planning for?
There will be in July.
So, there's nobody running?
We have one, one...
I know there's somebody running, but, um...
But that's, hold on, we'll get that in seven minutes.
So, what do we do?
Continuing till 7:30?
Till 7:30.
7:30?
We'll make a motion to, to 7:30, April 11.
Where is that, maybe, maybe?
No, April 11, just get going.
Everybody come.
7:30.
Yep. All right, we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll be continuing.
April 11.
April 11.
And 7:30?
Try to bring a summary of your presentations. If you have issues that you've tried to talk to the lawyer, send that to us, and we can... All right.
It's nice meeting you.
Yeah, you too.
He definitely made it a little more enjoyable.
Should we send him over to the hall for nothing?
No. All right, your motion for adjournment?
Also, the general?